Meeting the Town and Niski Unit Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Twitty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Shenfield?
Here.
Mr. Scrappy Tennis?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Mr. McPartland?
Here.
Mr. Diopino?
Here.
Mr. Oster?
Here.
Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from the January 28th meeting that were included in your packet. I had no comments. That was a good job. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mr. Khan and Secretary of Transit Diopino. Any comments at all? Anybody else? Concerns? No? Okay. Those in favor of approval of the minutes from January 28th signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing no one opposed, those minutes will be unanimously approved. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town and Niski Unit, please come to the microphone to listen to what you have to say. So, privilege of the floor is open for any planning and zoning matters.
Good evening. My name is Nick Kieser. I'm at 126 DeWitt Avenue in Schenectady. Now that I heard that the rezoning presentation at the last planning board meeting and the discussion I followed, I have several comments to make. Although I have a few more issues because of time constraints, I would like to briefly address and respond to just four main issues that were brought up. During the presentation, Jeffrey Twitty said other communities had had success. This is concerning the 500 Balltown OD Heck rezoning application. Jeffrey Twitty said that other communities had success in mixed-use neighborhoods such as villages at New Loudon in Latham and Elmsworth Commons in Malta. Both, after I did some research, both neighborhoods are zoned commercial. One is zoned COR, the other one's zoned C2. After researching them, I wouldn't call them a good comparison, nor would I call either of them successful. The village of New Loudon is first-floor retail stores with apartments above. There is a gated community of townhouses behind. The townhouses haven't been selling well. The apartments support CN College. The Elmsworth Commons in Malta is similar. The apartments quickly filled up because of global foundries. However, there are now many vacancies because global foundries is undergoing, you know, a restructuring. Currently, there's over 75,000 square feet of vacant retail space. I don't consider apartments as residential. Kevin Walsh said if the land was offered for sale and purchased by a developer, the developer could fill it with single-family homes. They're gonna, they're going to get as many homes as they can in there. More children would be part of that development and more students in South Colony. Apartments and multifamily homes, as in the mixed-use, are even higher density than single-family homes, which means even more children and students in South Colony. This is not currently an R3 district. If the concern is the housing density, then zone it to a lower-density R1 residential Planner Laura Robinson said homes, for example, could be built along with small stores people could walk to. Food markets, banks, medical offices, restaurants, and schools also would be allowed. With the current mix of stores within a half-mile of one another, there is no need for more stores. And I have an example of this. I won't go into the details of each store, but currently, within a half-mile from my house, there's three food supermarkets, one department store, three convenience stores, one discount store, one pet store, one veterinarian, six clothing stores, five shoe stores, one baby store, two beauty stores, two bars, two haircutters, seven banks, one liquor store, eight fast-food restaurants, two sit-down restaurants, one bakery, three fitness centers, one childcare, three furniture stores, one appliance store, two electronics stores, two paint stores, one real estate store, one home improvement store, three mattress stores, five telecommunications cellphone stores, which includes the new one that's going in, three gas stations, two vitamin shops, two dental stores, one iGet glass store, one medical store, one party supply store, three pharmacies, one tax prep store, one jewelry store, two ice cream yogurt stores, two tire stores, one car dealership, and there's also currently five vacant stores, not including the ones that's filling up. There's one in the Niski Unit Plaza. There's three large stores, the old Ruby Tuesdays, the old Walmart, the old Bed Bath and Beyond, and there's another store that was a haircut of place next to H and R Block. So essentially, within a half-mile, I can take care of my food, clothing, and shoe needs, my medical, dental, eye, drug, and fitness needs. I can take care of my furniture, appliance, electronics, house repair, and home improvement needs, as well as selling my house. I can take care of my car, tires, and gasoline needs. I can take care of my banking, finance, and tax return needs. I can even take care of my childcare, baby, and pet needs. I can take care of my cellphone needs. All of these needs are fulfilled within less than a half-mile from my house. And if I can only walk down Balltown Road, I can fill all these needs by walking or bicycling. The only four needs that I can't take care of are: there isn't a bookstore, there isn't a library, there's no lawyers, and there isn't a park. The other question was, the other comment I had to make is Ms. Robinson further stated that town zeroed in on rezoning the OD Heck facility because it's ideally located between the commercial zones and the residential zones. This is simply not true. Opposite OD Heck on Council Road area is Hanaford Niski Unit Plaza. It's a CN Commercial Neighborhood District. That was originally an R1 low-density residential district. The wetlands extended from OD Heck, which was originally Stanford Golf Course, across Council Road into what is now Niski Unit Plaza. The R1 vacant land was changed to CN in the middle of the 1990s, so approximately 20 years ago, as the Mohawk Mall was being demolished. Ms. Robinson stated, "I would consider the spot zoning." And the reason why is because Ms. Robinson stated that an example of spot zoning would be taking a certain parcel within an homogeneous neighborhood and changing it to what is not characteristic of the area. Because that was originally R1 and the corner was changed to CN, and there was no other commercial thing because it was all residential around there, because the change of zoning within another originally zoned district, that I'd consider spot zoning. The wetlands were pushed back to accommodate Hanaford's Niski Unit Plaza. It was so haphazardly done that the stewards, which was still in the R1 district, had to be rezoned as part of the CN district years later in the 2003 comprehensive plan. Now, that part opposite OD Heck, about a third, is zoned CN. And you're using that reason to say, essentially, let's connect the dots and continue Mohawk Commons commercial zoning all the way to the CN zone. This is a slippery slope, to say the least. OD Heck to the west is owner-occupied, single-family zoning. It's not low-density, as Mr. Twitty said in his presentation, and that's in your meeting minutes. It's at least equivalent to R2 or R3 zoning. To the east of OD Heck, there's also R2 zoning. To the north of OD Heck was entirely R1 zoning until Niski Unit zoned a small CN district for Hanaford. Only to the south of OD Heck is commercial since the 1960s. I bought my house, as do many others, including those north of Council Road, knowing full well that I would be in a residential district and not a commercial district. OD Heck is really surrounded by residential on three sides. The 2003 Niski Unit Comprehensive Plan and prior plans called for keeping OD Heck an R2 residential zone. Only in 2013 Niski Unit Comprehensive Plan, which was approved in 2015, was there ever a suggestion to change the zoning. It's one sentence at the bottom of page 116 continuing to the top of page 117. And it's one sentence, and it doesn't define what it is. So that's one sentence in a 128-page document. One of the last issues is the issue of, "We want a neighborhood so people can reside, work, and recreate in a walkable area." Residential will have at least two cars per household. It's extremely rare that a person works in the same neighborhood as they live. When you have, you have business in any area, whether it's a residential community or commercial, in order for any business to survive and thrive, you also need outside patrons frequently to business. That creates more cars and more traffic, not less. A residential-only community has limited cars and traffic. Cars are gone during the day and home during the night. Once you add any type of business to the mix, you have more cars and more traffic and at all hours. It's common sense. Lastly, I'm certainly not against any municipality increasing its tax base, as long as it's done in a thoughtful and responsible way. However, this mixed-use district is ill-conceived. More retail, restaurants, banks, food markets, apartments, hotels, fitness centers, and gasoline station, yes, that's allowed, is not what we need for the OD Heck property. It's an, quote, "anything-goes" district. A limit on cars and traffic is what we need. That can only be done by keeping this an R2 residential district or imposing the stricter R1 zoning. Now, I have a final thought. Why not put OD Heck into three zoning districts? One is LC, Land Conservation for the Wetlands, perhaps including the Ball Field already there, and create a town park. In the middle, have it stay R2, R1, or even RP, which is Residential Professional. So I can have that lawyer, not in the area. And then, towards the back service road, the east side, have another CN or the CMU District, the mixed-use district. Passing OD Heck property into three zoning districts can accomplish what you want. That is a recreational park, single-family, owner-occupied housing, and a mixed-use apartment retail space. I'm sure the state would sell Niski Unit a land for $1 to create a park out of the wetlands and Ball Field because the state has no need for it since there are no residents there anymore. Both the 2003 and 2013 Comprehensive Plan mentions in great detail the need for accessible pedestrian bicycle-friendly neighborhood parks. You're now in a position to make this happen with the OD Heck rezoning. Thank you for considering my thoughts. If you haven't already done so, I ask you to drive and possibly walk the area before considering making any decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Privilege of the floor still open?
My name is Chris Zimmerman, and I'm here to speak in favor of the Knott Street Safety Planning Improvement Project, and then, secondly, to comment on the rezoning of the property of Balltown. I just wanted to say, comment at first, I think both of these projects have a common theme of pedestrian safety. So the first project that I wanted to comment on was the Safety Improvement Project there at Knott Street, near the Co-op. And so, as a person that have lived on Regent Street for 15 years, I've frequently visited the stores and in that area, both by car and as a pedestrian, and have personally witnessed numerous accidents in the area, as well as been a part of a fender bender in that parking lot as well. And then also additionally have witnessed almost numerous pedestrians be hit within the crosswalk. And so, given kind of the lack of safety and pedestrian safety in that area, strongly support and favor trying to come up with a plan that will both accommodate the businesses in the area, but that will provide a safety pedestrian walkway for the residents in the area. Secondly, I just wanted to comment on the rezoning of the Balltown area, which we'll be discussing tonight. As we've already heard, there's numerous amenities within this area and surrounding the area that's under discussion tonight, but what I will note is that there is no safe pedestrian walkway. So while all these amenities exist near residential areas, there's actually no crosswalks from which a pedestrian could actually safely access any of those grocery stores. And so, we actually have pedestrians walking on Balltown Road, which is probably, I would think, one of the most unsafe conditions that we could favor. So, thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Paulina Montzo. I also live on Regent Street for the last 15 years, and I too walk and bike and drive to these shops on Knott Street and am here to support the Knott Street Safety Improvements. Now that Chris and I have a daughter who's 10 years old, she also wants to walk to the shops there. And I'm just here to say, there's no safe way to get there without continuous sidewalks, without safe, clear crosswalks. I don't feel comfortable letting her go out by herself. She's desperate to spread her wings and be an independent kid, and I think pedestrian safety should really be the priority over cars' convenience getting in those shops. I know it's going to be a hassle for some people to park, but I really think pedestrian safety should be the priority here. So, thank you for your consideration.
Daryl Bray, 1420 Van Antwerp Road. I just wanted to comment a couple things. I spoke last time about the Knott Street development, or the widening of the intersection. I almost got killed there today, so... But, you know, the cars are moving very quickly. I have concerns that, with traffic, and just in a general, in-town, I think you sort of commented on earlier, the sidewalks are really inadequate. And I know you guys do a great job looking at all these plans, at how they fit into the comprehensive plan, you know, but when you look at each one of these individually and what they're doing, sometimes I think, looking at the comprehensive plan and how it applies to them, rather than the other way around, while each one maybe is acceptable within the plan, I think in general, some of the things as a whole, where we to develop everything to the nth degree, becomes too much. So where's the line? And I know that's a hard thing to do and to manage. I look at the OD Heck property, and I think Jeff did a great job with his presentation, and I was really, I had a very positive reaction to it. The problem is that I think it's just not concrete enough as far as to what control we would have if that came to pass. I think it has a lot of potential, but I have my fears. And that's, I guess, is hard to articulate since we don't know exactly what it's going to be, which I was put at ease by your discussion last time, and I want to thank you guys for what you took the time to go through all that stuff, and it did. After the fact, I was a lot less nervous than I was initially, but in the end, there still seems to be a lot of questions, you know, and that would be something that, maybe the amount of green space or something that could be maybe a little bit more concrete. I know that, you know, and this, I think, was with the Knott Street intersection, sidewalks and stuff are going to be put in, like, I really feel strongly, I've spoken about this before, with all these projects that we do, we need to be, even if it's not sidewalks, it's, you know, bike paths, pedestrian walkways, places, you know. I'm running around the town constantly, and I'm usually in the road because there's just really not a lot of options, you know, and I've seen you guys out there running as well, so I know you guys, you know, who are active, know the deal, but there's gotta be a way that we can, and I know it's an expense, but like, it's gotta be a priority because there's kids walking around. I've got a 13-year-old, I think it was just this past summer, he was a seventh grader, I felt comfortable letting him go on his bike with his friends. I mean, when I was five years old, I was on my bike going. I don't, you didn't, you know what I mean? The parents didn't know where we were. But now, there's, you know, thousands more cars, a lot more inexperienced drivers, but our infrastructure hasn't kept pace with that, and it's just, I mean, it's dangerous, you know? I think we should consider more stop signs, more ways to slow cars down, make them stop, you know? Because I was out running the other day, and I'll tell you this, I went through an intersection, and there was a kid on a bike, and there was a stop sign, and I know that it's a blind corner, and the kid on the bike just went right through the stop sign. Like, and there was no way he could have seen if there was a car coming, or that a car could have seen him, you know? And it just seems like it's inevitable that something's going to happen. It's not your guys' fault, I understand that, and I'm not saying that you take responsibility for it or anything like that, but we gotta start really thinking about this walkability, and, you know, we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know my husband touched on it. My name's Lisa Kieser. I'm at 126 DeWitt, right off Balltown Road, across from the OD Heck property. My husband talked a little about how we see our neighbors trying to walk to the Mohawk Commons and Mansion Square with no sidewalks. I watched one of my neighbors the other day almost get hit. It would be so nice to have that little community park there on one side, sidewalks. That would really link up the ShopRite to the Mohawk Commons. We could have a truly walkable community. We almost do now with the existing residences there, except for the fact that it's dangerous. There are no sidewalks whatsoever from the stewards near the ShopRite going down towards the other shopping centers, the Mohawk Commons and the, and the one across the street there, Mansion Square. So if we could get sidewalks on both sides, some sidewalks on Council Road, and ideally, I would like to see that a wetland and a park, at least half that property, because most other towns have a park. You have Zuccotti Park, you have Central Park in Schenectady, Scotia Glenville has parks. We really don't have a park, and we don't have a lot of nice things culturally or green spaces on that end of Niskiuna. So I think that would be a great idea, what my husband proposed, but we would need more traffic safety devices, we would need more sidewalks, and, you know, it could be structured nicely that way. So, you know, you already have the structure for a walkable community. You just have to, you know, put a few things in place and be very nice there.
Good evening. My name is Tom Hodgkins. I live in Roswell Road. Couple things I'd like to support. I've heard some good ideas tonight, and I think that one thing is walkability and safety. And I think we really need to make sure that in future developments on the restructuring of Knott Corner and Balltown is, really enhances the pedestrian safety, walkability, cycles, everything. But my main concern is the development of the OD Heck campus. Right now, it's about a third undeveloped. If you look at the southern third, there's wooded area with some wetlands, and then there's just open fields. I think that needs to maintain that status. One thing, growing up in Niskiuna, you see developments everywhere, wetlands building. This used to be cattails where we are right now, fields of cattails before the elephant grass moved in. And over by the library, that used to be all cattails all through here. And over by the Hanaford, I used to cut through there on my bike, and it was all undeveloped, beautiful areas to explore as a kid. And all those areas, a lot of them are gone now. There's no, none of those places. Very diminished. So if we can maintain some undeveloped land, let it go, let the wild reclaim that land, let it maintain that status in the one wooded section. And then the other side, I don't know. I think there's some good ideas that people have thought through about these things, but I don't know about the development side of it. But I think to maintain green space, at least a third of the green space, and let it go into just some, let the grass grow, you know? Let the insects and the birds come back to that space, make it some nice fields for wildlife again, and some walking paths for kids, adults. That's all. Thank you.
Daryl Bray, 1420 Van Antwerp Road. And I apologize, just write this stuff down, but I'm just like so busy right now, I'm just frantic. This is something I was, turned on the TV today when I got home from school, and the Spectrum News was on, and our supervisor was on, being interviewed, which was interesting. I didn't see all of it, just saw a little bit of it, but there's one that was talking about the loss of the money, state aid money, and what they were doing to address it. And one of the things that she talked about was looking at our zoning and considering bringing in more commercial. I think it was Mr. Khan was talking last year, how much commercial space do we have left? She did reference the OD Heck property specifically, which was, I thought, sort of timely to what had been going on here. I wasn't sure whether there was a wholesale revisioning of the zoning, which sort of was what was implied in the interview, or it was just a, she did say, all things are on the table, not just the rezoning, but they're looking for all ways of generating revenue to make up for the loss. And, you know, talked about the possibility of cutting services, cutting equipment purchases. But I just was concerned when I heard, you know, rezoning commercial, and I know that that's been something that's been looked at in the past, and not necessarily that positively with the residents. If that's something is being considered, I would like to voice my opposition to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Privilege of the floor? Last call? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close. Privilege of the floor, we'll move on to the agenda. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move right to new business. On our new business, we have Resolution 2019-05, a resolution for site plan approval of a construction facility and storage yard at 397 Anthony Street. Mr. Twitty?
One of the purposes of the meeting was to take action on an application for a site plan review. Whereas Jamrock Leasing LLC has made an application to the planning board for a special use permit and site plan review for the use of 397 and 399 Anthony Street. It's a construction storage facility, as shown in the site plan entitled Jackson Demolition, Anthony Street, Town and Niskiuna, Schenectady County, New York, dated April 16, 2018, last updated February 5, 2019. And whereas the zoning classification of the property is IG, General Industrial, and LC Land Conservation. And whereas the planning board conducted a public hearing on August 27, 2018 to consider the application for a special use permit and site plan review. And whereas this application was referred to the Schenectady County Planning Department on July 11, 2018, and the county responded that they deferred to local consideration. And whereas the application was referred to the Niskiuna Conservation Advisory Council, and whereas the Conservation Advisory Council reviewed the application on September 5, 2018, and at that time recommended that the lead agency issue a negative secret declaration. And whereas the town board, acting in accordance with the state environmental quality review regulations and local law, assumed the position of lead agency for this project, determined the project will not have a significant effect on the environment, and directed the town planner to file a negative declaration. And whereas the town board granted a special use permit on October 23, 2018, to allow a construction facility and storage yard to operate at 397 and 399 Anthony Street. to allow a construction facility and storage yard to operate at three ninety-seven and three ninety-nine Anthony Street by its resolution number twenty eighteen dash two seven oh. And whereas the planning board referred this application to the town's engineering department and the department does not object to the proposed plans. And whereas this board has carefully reviewed the proposal and by this resolution does set forth its decision hereon. Now therefore, hereby resolved, this planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant final site plan approval for a special use permit to allow a construction facility and storage yard to operate at three ninety-seven and three ninety-nine Anthony Street, subject to the following conditions. One, this resolution shall be incorporated into any deed of sale for this, for this property. And the conditions of this resolution shall be binding on the applicant. The owner, if different than the applicant, their successor, assigns or transferes. Two, wetlands may not be disturbed, drained or physically altered in any way without first contacting the Army Corps of Engineers. Additionally, as the town of Niskuna requires that no land can be, that no land can be disturbed within a twenty-five foot buffer from the boundary of the wetland. Three, in accordance with chapter one eighty of the Soil Erosion Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town of Niskuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the superintendent of water, sewer and engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. Four, prior to the issuance of a final C O, the applicant shall sign a stormwater control facility maintenance and access agreement in order to ensure the proposed stormwater, stormwater facilities are installed and maintained per plans. Five, prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall participate in a pre-construction meeting with the town of Niskuna and shall address any concerns raised by the town or the town designated engineer. Six, prior to site disturbance, the site plan map shall be modified to reflect agreed upon decisions of the pre-construction meeting, if any, and, and distributed as required to the town and all involved contractors. Final site plan shall be submitted to the town labeled for construction. Seven, prior to site disturbance, confirmation shall be made by the applicant to the Department of Public Works that material specifications and site details, including road and utility plan profiles, meet town standards. Eight, prior to, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any engineering and drainage concerns will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town superintendent of water, sewer and engineering. Nine, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any questions or concerns raised by the town designated, designated, designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. Ten, prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall provide written approval from the Schenectady County Intermunicipal Watershed Rules and Regulations Board for this proposed use in zone three as a great flat sole source of aquifer. Eleven, as a condition of the special use permit, all recycled materials shall be stored in storage bins with, with asphalt lining and the height of such material piles is limited to twenty feet. Twelve, as a condition of the special use permit, the parking of unregistered vehicles and equipment on this property shall be limited to two. Thirteen, all large truck traffic associated with the properties encouraged to enter and exit the area via technology drive to limit the impact to nearby residential properties. Fourteen, prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall provide a public access and conservation easement from, from three ninety-nine Anthony Street across three ninety-seven Anthony Street in recordable form to the town with the required recording fees. Fifteen, prior to the pre-construction meeting, an access easement for the existing gravel road shall be dedicated to the town of Niskuna and provided in recordable form to the town with the required recording fees. Sixteen, the replanting and soil restoration plan for the LCs, LCs shown shall be completed according to the landscaping, seeding and soil restoration plan on page C ten of the above referenced site plans.
Thank you, Mr. Twitty. Mr. McPartland, have a motion on the resolution?
I move for adoption.
Okay, move for adoption by Mr. McPartland. Have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Scribbitennis. And Mr. Easton, why don't you come on up and we may have some discussion? I know they had a little bit of discussion before the meeting with Laura and I just mentioned to Mr. McPartland. I was also a little concerned about condition number twelve. We want to talk about that. Make sure we have some clarification there. Originally, number twelve, I believe the words were abandoned, but that's not recognized in our code. So the word unregistered vehicles was chosen. The intent here is not to have vehicles that are unregistered slash abandoned, where, you know, growing grass or, you know, just left there. Maybe, you know, it's possible to have a couple because you may have a, say, a dump truck that you might want to reuse the body in the future and you want to hold on to it for a bit. This would allow that to happen. So I think the key word, Laura, I think is really parking of unregistered vehicles. So if you have like an unregistered bucket loader, it could be registered for the road, but it's functional and you're using that to move material around the site. I don't, I don't think that's the intent here. I just wanted to make, make sure we have this discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we can't change, we can't change the actual, the actual words in the resolution because it came from the town board. We don't have that authority. But we can clarify for the record that we're speaking of, you know, vehicles that are not operational, they're not working on the site. They don't, they're not having a purpose except for, you know, somebody thinks they're gonna recycle them and make money off of them like ten years in the future. Like, that's, that's what we're trying to limit. Because I think, Patrick, you remember, like, we saw some things that were maybe a little old on the existing site and we just don't want to see that happen down by the river.
And I have no objection to that. I think that the, the drivability and functionality of the vehicle itself, you know, is a classification that we want to keep. In my opinion, that it needs to be operational, if it's operational on the site or whatever. But if it's not operational by any mechanical means, you know, then two, two is
The limit.
The limit. And that will be relayed to the owner in, in more specifics.
Yeah. So I think we can clarify for the record that our understanding of that is that it means operational vehicles.
Right. I think the key word too is like I said, parking, right? For, they're parked because they're not operational. They're parked and they're operational because they're used for, like I said, moving material around but not registered. I mean, that's okay.
Right, yep.
It's part of doing business. So we don't want to impede the business and the functionality of the site because of the, the words that were chosen there. But I think we're pretty good there then. Do you have any questions on that or concern?
Nope.
On, on condition number ten, the applicant shall provide written approval from the Schenectady County Intermunicipal Watershed Rules. Is that prior to any type of construction taking place on the property pursuant to? Do they have an ongoing review that they provide?
I think they meet quarterly, but you can get their planner, groundwater person, Jason Pelton, will often be able to write things in email.
Okay.
So I guess it just depends on how formal the watershed board wants to be.
I guess that's just my, you know, my question now is sort of the process for the on, because it talks about prior to the pre-construction meeting and maybe something's okay at the time prior to, you know, pre-construction. But what, is there like an ongoing review? I know that was a, a concern that came up previously when we had done the, we did the initial approval about sort of the, I know initially it signed off and said, hey, we don't have concerns. But just to make sure that there's sort of that ongoing review taking place from the watershed, just to make sure that there's nothing that could cause it once construction begins.
Yes, I, I think from, from reading the resolution there, I think formal documentation that the water, the Water Board Council does not have any objections to their, their approved site plans needs to be provided to the town.
And, but on an ongoing basis?
Well, I mean, if there was gonna be a modification to the use or the site plan, they would have to come back to us. I think as long as they're in keeping with the approved plans, that's what we're saying, right?
Yeah.
The pre-construction, that's built as, as stated, and there shouldn't be any change.
That is correct.
If you were to change something, you would need to come back to us anyway.
That is correct. We're not changing anything.
I mean, that's, that, so I understand.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's just if there are cases or something else that's happening with like a significant amount of water or something where there might be an issue where we, we're assuming something right now, but there might be a condition. Not anything that you're doing, but there might be some other environmental condition that might impact that what you're doing there, that then may change their perspective on that down the road. I guess that's what I'm trying to factor into.
Okay, certainly rules and regulations do change over time. Certainly, we've all seen that with wetland regulations and things like that. Certainly when the Water Board Council are just like you, you approve something and it's approved at that time. Typically, you don't go back to that board every quarter and say, hey, I'm still doing the same operation or once a year I'm doing that same operation. Are you okay with that? Typically, that's not the procedure that, that board, you know, does. They look at your application, they grant it at that time of what you're proposing to do. Certainly if there was a change in use at the site or the change in the operation that's been described in the project narrative. Certainly the town has the authority to stop that operation. And certainly then the Water Board Council would be, get involved because there's a change in practice at the site.
Yeah, the zoning enforcement officer can make sure that the site plan conforms with what we approve. And if there's a significant change, we would, you know, essentially stop work order them and then everybody could check on it again.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, but I don't recall the watershed board having any real constructive feedback.
Yeah, we reached out to them a couple of times. They sort of provisionally said that they were okay with it, but they wanted to make sure that the storage was temporary in which they weren't going to see mountains of things being stored next to the river. So I think all they really need is kind of the final plan, the final documentation, and they'll be able to weigh in.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Questions for the applicant? No? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Shenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Scribbitennis?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Nay.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino?
Aye.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
German Walsh?
Aye, resolution's adopted. I just wanted to thank Mr. McPartland and Mr. Easton. Please pass our thanks on to the applicant for, you know, making the changes that we requested to come into our, you know, with the LC, getting out of the LC zone with the stormwater management. We appreciate that.
No problem. I'll pass along and thank you, board. It was a pleasure. I'll see you soon.
All right, that's it for new business. We'll move on to discussion items. And first up, and the only thing on the agenda is the five hundred of Balltown Road discussion for the rezone application from R two medium density, medium density residential to neighborhood mixed use. Thanks again for the public for their comments tonight. This is, again, we'll talk about it and see where we're going from here. Included in our packet was a, a agenda statement from the planning office and a copy of the, or chapter two twenty of the zoning to take a look at. I did talk to Laura, a couple of things that I was reviewing it. And one thing that Laura picked up on is the setback requirements in the table. There was no front yard setback. That's included in the packet. The little table that's in there. So we have the side, rear yard, the structure. And it said for the front yard to be determined. So that was, we're not sure why, maybe the thought was is that would be based on, you know, the submittal, what works. So that is something we may need to talk about, whether we need to have that predetermined before we move this on to the town board, if we move it on to the town board. The other comment that I had was under the parking, you take a look on parking, section two twenty forty-eight dot three three. It talks about residential parking, which is the typical, you know, two cars per unit, single family dwelling, which is typical. But under non-residential, it just basically states off-street parking area should be located to the side of the rear. It doesn't really have, unless I missed something, any of the, like, the, you know, rules of thumb where we see like for so many square feet of retail or whatever, how many parking spots there should, should be. So the intent at the time may have been that, you know, the two parking spots per unit was sufficient to also cover the use of the, you know, business that may be located there. I guess we need to make sure we understand that. That was the only thing, as I saw, everything else seemed to be, you know, as it's been. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or Laura, if you'd like to, or weigh in on that at all?
No, I, I think, so the building department creates a similar chart like this for anybody who's coming to do a building permit. And they were just trying to clarify for us how the setbacks would work if someone was to pull a building permit. And, I mean, it was color coded. Whether this, whether this is right or, or wrong. I mean, I know we looked at this code a lot, but it sort of becomes a little different when you start to implement it. I mean, the non-residential, the commercial setbacks are from the side and from the rear are a lot larger.
I know we're talking about a minimum, but is there like a maximum?
Yeah, yeah. And we also talked about that too, because there's not a maximum.
Because that's one of the concepts. I think, I think we sort of envision what this could be, and kind of a mix of sort of these smaller stores and, and restaurants and bookstores poss, I mean, just things that are sort of smaller. But
In scale.
In scale. But I guess the question is, is are we, is it being written the right way to enable that? If we don't have a maximum,
That's the question.
Can that enable the bigger, like a bigger retailer going and then kind of up, upend that vision?
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's the question. So it's a little bit hard. Because we did look at this. We took some stuff out. We put some of the stuff back in. But it's without being, without implementing it, is a little bit hard to envision exactly how someone would take it and use it. So, I mean, I don't know if, how much it would cost or, or not, but I know Kevin has said that he's brought this up before. I probably, some of you guys have too. I mean, it would be interesting to give the code to an architect and just be like, or can you just create something with this code? And then if they really struggle with the code, then we can be like, okay, well, that's not working. And let's go back to it.
It's a takeoff, right?
Yeah, just, just a real quick sketch, like, can you use this code? And what would it look like, you know, if you were sort of trying to maximize your dollar?
But we get somebody who, you know, give us rendering, give us some site plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As a possibility.
Because that, you know, that, I know even when we did talk about this several years ago, when we first started talking about it, it always been like, well, if we develop it, will people actually, will actually create something that someone will actually want to come in and do?
Yeah.
You know, but I think we sort of have the vision of what it is, but is it written in the way to create the, create the vision? I think, you know, I do still sort of see that, you know, even though, even if the zoning may not be as, as we thought it was, and I don't know for sure that's the case or not. But I think I still sort of see a, a vision of it, like it is in, like in, in Latham. Where you have a mix of townhouses and these smaller, and these smaller stores. My other question is, I know we talked about it, but I just, I, I didn't see it definitively. That any developer who's gonna come forward has to come forward with things that meet multiple boxes? I mean, that's the part of this that like, if they want to develop only part of it, if they, if they buy a parcel of it.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit before. If for some reason O D Heck wanted to keep half and surplus half, you couldn't say, okay, that fifty percent's gonna get developed later. I'm gonna do all commercial on my half. And then the next person's gonna come in and do residential. You couldn't do that. You would have to have the mixtures on the parcel that you have.
So it actually says in here that you actually have to have, come forward with something that checks multiple boxes?
Yeah, I mean,
Where, where's that?
Well, you, you couldn't come, you, you, you have to sign a site plan application that says like, you're the owner, you're authorized by the owner to be, you know, in charge of taking this development forward to the town planning board. You wouldn't be able to apply for the half that you don't own. So you'd only be able to apply to the town of Niskuna with what you own or what you're under contract to own. If, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right, right. No, I, I guess.
Then whatever you own is going to be subject to the mixing requirements.
Right. So I guess the thing is though, if like they, but someone comes up with a plan that will say, okay, I want to develop this portion, you know, they buy the whole thing. You know, we changed the zone, you know, we changed this, we changed the zone. Somebody just plans in to come and say, well, I'm gonna come in first with a phase one, which is housing. And then phase two, I'll come in with something else. Would that not, would that meet this or not meet this?
Well, I guess it would depend. We actually struggled a little, well, this was one of the major concerns of the Conservation Advisory Council and the reason that it took a while for the Conservation Advisory Council to move it forward. But I mean, we do approve phase development. We actually had this conversation with Rivers Ledge.
Right.
And we put the timeline on them for how their phases have to work because they have to have a certain mix of commercial with their residential. And so if they don't come back at a certain time, I mean, essentially they're out of compliance with their zoning, they can't be renting, they can't be selling the town mid-stop work order, any construction they were under if they didn't meet their phased timelines. It would be, I mean, it would not be pretty. That is not a situation that we want to be in. But, you know, we have, I mean, we have approved phases on mixed construction before.
I guess I'm just wondering, is to some extent, could there be some type of, again, just clarifying that any type of construction project that comes forward has to, for lack of a better expression, check multiple boxes?
Yeah. And I mean, that would be at you guys's, yes.
It is that practice.
But the phasing would be at you guys's discretion, really. You are allowed to phase, that's in our code. You are allowed to allow for phases. But I mean, you would want to obviously be very careful with phasing something as complicated as a mixed use development, right?
Right. I guess what I'm saying is no matter what happens, that whatever fit, if, even if you phase it, phase one would have to have mixed, you know, mixed uses. Phase two would have to have mixed uses. And again, I'm not even saying that that is a good idea. I'm just saying that that seems to be what I just want to, you know, I think because we have a vision, I hate to have someone say, well, I'm gonna accomplish the vision. I'll do. I hate to have someone say, well, I'm gonna accomplish the vision, I'll do this part, and then maybe later I'll come back and do the other part.
So that's, yeah, that's exactly what the CAC's concern was, which is why their note to you was any development that you review under the OD Hack, like, please consider it in concert with the entire parcel, the entire vision that you have, but
But is there an express provision in the, in, in this code that says that that's the case, that's really what I'm getting to? And I probably shouldn't write it more to confirm it, I just didn't, didn't jump out to me.
Well, right, so I mean, 220, 48 dot 30A, all development shall meet the following mixed requirements. That is the provision that says that those mixed requirements have to meet, that's not a must, or that may, or that's not the guideline, that is a shall. So, they have to.
I mean, the only one that gets close to what Mo's talking about is potentially in that same section, um, B. But it talks about it in the context of a single lot.
Because multiple, like, this to, this, this code can, you know, actually encourages single-family attached, which we don't have in any of our codes anywhere else. The only time we've ever been able to have townhouses constructed in the town of Niskiyouna has been under a used for rent or a PPD. So, um, we are very not friendly to townhomes. Our single-family residential code says detached only. So this is the only place in our code which actually outright allows townhomes, and I think that's encouraged, there's supposed to be a mix of residential, different types of residential, so you shall include at least two of the following hu- housing types, single-family detached, single-family attached, or multifamily, I mean theoretically you could do single-family detached and multifamily. Um, but the market for townhomes, like, people wanting to downsize a little bit and still have walkability, I think that's really an amenity that's lacking in the town of Niskiyouna, so you would
Hope, but you're talking about mixed types of housing developments, I'm talking about both, but mixed type of residential, but I'm talking about mixed residential and small commercial, like, or even like a, whether it's RP or whatever, just some, you know, something that's to me not clear that you have to get A, B, A, B and C. You know, you have to
Under a single site plan application to the town?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you the, the code says that you have to have, um, 25 to 65% residential, 5 to 25% non-residential, and a minimum of 20% open space. And that would be for any application that you put before the planning board. If you want to phase it, the planning board has a right to phase, that's in their site plan review, um, allowance, but you can say, no, we don't want it phased, we want to make sure that everything is built at the same time, because we need to have this mix, and it needs to be funded, and you need to show us you can do it all, right? I mean, you have that power.
But that's the only section that really gives it the way you'd like to see it more, or we, right?
Again, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to talk it out, the idea just to kind of like, see if, if we're actually achieve, with this achieving the vision that I think we all have, and not giving birth to something that we didn't want to see. Which, by the question about the maximum size lots, and then my other question is just, I know there was a suggestion made tonight about could it be, could it be further sub, subzoned, where this zone is this, and this zone is mixed use, and this zone remains as the, and again, I don't even know if that's a practical dynamic or not, but it's just, it was, it was, it was an interesting idea that got put, that, that put out tonight.
Yeah.
And I don't, and I don't know if it's practical or not, I've just, it was just a
Generally speaking, you want the zoning to follow parcel lines if you can help it, and, um,
Well, no, but just because if, you know, the, the, the dyna-, you know, for example, you have R2 at, at some part of it, and you have, you know, whatever, it just, I mean, you know, is, and whether the R2 would continue to extend in some portion of it, and then the other portion of it would be mixed, you know, again, not necessarily in the dimension that was talked about, but is there some further way that could be subdivided?
Well, yeah, but the, uh,
Only to throw it out there is just a conversation point about very, varying ideas, because I think it's only, only when you begin to have a conversation, you begin to really start thinking through
Yeah.
how this would actually work if this were to become reality.
It's true, and but the dis-, and that's why I love discussion, but theoretically, um, at least under the code as it's written now, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't take a double look at it, because even just at our building department, we noticed something, right? But you have to have 20% of open space, and we all know that wetlands are, you know, pretty well protected by, um, so, I mean, you can almost imagine that any developer that's gonna touch that parcel is automatically gonna say, here's my 20%, here's your beautiful wetland town, you know what I mean? Um, and then having residential 20 to 65, I mean, that's a large, uh, difference, but I'm, I'm not even sure, so all of this stuff has to equal 100, there's no way that you could have 20% residential with a maximum of 25 non-residential, and then 20% that doesn't equal 100. So you're actually looking at, so if you have a minimum of 20% of open space, and say somebody maxed out the, uh, non-residential to 25, you're at 45. So you're gonna, your minimum residential is at 55. So, um, so that's an inconsistency in the code that we could potentially fix, but, so 55 to 65% of the property area has to be residential. Um, and then if you wanted it, and then some, somebody maxes out commercial to 25% commercial, I mean, you are essentially doing one-third LC, one-third R2, one-third CN, I mean, that is what the gentleman brought up. I completely understand that the flexibility in this code may be a little bit, I mean, he brought it up before, like, the flexibility is a little bit scary, and I think Daryl said that too, like, so maybe we look at tightening it a little bit, but, um, I think that this code is achieving a little bit of that anyway.
Yeah, oh yes, no, no, it, it, it's just as I said, it's just kind of talking it through and how it would actually work, I think there was some idea of having certain portions of it just be completely dead, as opposed to having the open space be kind of cut out, be this part over here, this part over here, and this part over there, is there some portion of it, we just say, no matter what happens, we have that as open space, and we reduce where the developer, developer areas, I, I don't even know, I'm just
I don't think
Inviting that conversation as, as a
Zoning is not the tool that you would do, use for that, I don't think, that's an overreach for a zone, a zoning. Um, I mean, you, the discretion at site plan is what you're talking about, I think. Um, unless you wanted to do a portion of it as an LC, but that in itself is a little bit complicated.
Can, can I say, I mean, I, I think it's worth discussing this in more detail and getting dialogue, however, this is it, it's, it's, it's an indication to the market that this is a 40-acre site ready for development, right? So our ability to prescribe a development plan that tightly with zoning code is really only so limited, I mean, we, we got a lot of complex factors in terms of the market and commercial, uh, commercial lease up, and there's a lot of fact, but, so the time spent in crafting a really great zoning code is only gonna go so far, because between now and the next 10 years, we have complex retail markets, we've got, you know, stick, bricks and sticks stores that are, that are challenged by the internet, I just think we should be thinking a little bit more broadly, because I think we, we're looking at a complex development uh, worldview right now, that I, I don't know how far we're gonna get, I guess in the end, how far will we be able to prescribe development? I think it's gonna really be dependent upon lots of financing and commercial factors, which we can't even account for yet. It's open-ended, we won't know. So I think we should, you know, prescribe, we, we should spend only so much time on it, because we're gonna be waiting for lots of development plans to sort through.
And I think I also see the blue side of that, which is, I'm not sure that the current zoning is actually viable, because OD Hack went in, and try and win, it's now Mohawk Commons, was still the Stanford golf course. Now that we've got the highway commercial zone next to it, if people look at it, don't see it as being reasonable for our two development, I'm worried that they'll come in and ask for extension of highway commercial, and I don't think that's in anybody's best interest. Especially given the precariousness of the current retail market. Um, I don't know if this is gonna work the way it's intended, I have concerns about some of the uses that are allowed, like hotels and fast food, because fast food, they want a drive-through, they want them to come in by car. I'm, I'm not comfortable with some of those elements. And I know the intent is to get the mixed use developed from the get-go, from day one. But I'm not sure that this is strong enough to make that happen. And we kind of need a legal opinion. I like the idea of having an architect or an engineer work with this and see what they would come up with. I'm wondering if there's a non-costly way of doing it, and maybe there's a college course nearby where they would have students who could work on this as a project, and give us some feedback.
Look reach out. Union has engineers.
I might have some.
I think, yeah. So, look, I'm, I'm calling from a perspective that the current R2 zoning there is not the right zoning for it to default to. So something needs to be done, but I think if we take the things that we are sensitive to, and the things that we've heard for that entire area, including the both sides of Balltown Road, the concept of safe pedestrian transport, right, I think some way, shape, or form, whether, and I know we can do a lot in site plan, but to Michael's point, none of us might be around when this code actually gets implemented. And if we can be more precise about certain things, including things like the walkability, like sidewalks, and even before then, you know, is there something that we can do on Balltown Road as it sits today? Right, because we, you know, we're, we're well aware of our sidewalk issues, right, I think it's, it's just a question of how do we, you know, do something that's effective and meaningful where that's concerned, so I think that's one of the things, I know traffic and traffic movement, we can handle that with site plan, right, there's gonna have to be a traffic study for every development, and the planning board does have some authority over there to make a decision based on what that traffic impact is going to be, right, and to regulate it. Um, so maybe, you know, what I'm saying relative to this is, I think overall it's good, but maybe we just want to see where there might be some loopholes on things that go out of our control that might fulfill the letter of the code, but, but not the intent, so one example is, you know, I think you've got it in here, but it's kind of buried in E, right, that a person can't, a developer cannot come in there with just a single type of residence, right, they need at least two.
Right, yeah.
But that's happening through that 50% criteria on condition E, correct, in
Yeah, I mean, so, they have to have at least two types of housing. One of the types of housing has to be more than 15%, and no, it can either be 50/50 or
Right.
Yeah.
So one key thing, I think, for, you know, for the neighbors to know and the public to know, is that somebody can't come in there and put in all multifamily units.
That's right.
Right? And your multifamily units are limited to eight units per, per building.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so limitations like that, I think, I like, because it gives us a little bit more leeway. But the point you're making before about the percentages, I think we do need to make sure that we close, you know, the gap on those. Right? Um, that we don't end up getting into a situation where we, uh, allow more than we want to of any one commercial or residential in the mix.
Mm-hmm.
Right? The, the last thing I wanted to comment on was on A3 in 4830. Is that 20% beyond the wetland area, or is the wetland area included in the 20%?
Well, um, when you guys are reviewing parkland, there's sort of a provision in the code that says the parkland needs to be usable space, in which case, that's when we sort of set aside the wetlands and say that, yeah, that has to be preserved, you can't be touching that, you don't have a permit, but you also have to give us, like, actual usable parkland space.
Okay.
I mean, unless open spaces is not defined separately, um, which, off the top of my head, I don't think that it is, then generally, when it comes to open space, they have been able to include wetlands and steep slopes and things that are generally undeveloped.
Yeah, so maybe that's something that we might want to make, just, good, again, my position on this is, I think, I think at the, you know, at the 100-foot view, neighborhood mixed use is right, but I think we have the opportunity, from what we've heard and from what we know, to maybe tweak a few things, to make them as, um, re- returning more control to the board at the point in time when a developer comes, than actually leaving it a little too open. That's, that's, and I know this is a code that was approved and put in there, but the question now becomes procedurally, what tweaking capability do we have?
Yeah, well, I mean, you have to go back and do a public hearing,
Yeah.
and for zoning code amendments, and then refer those to the town board as well. And, you know, is, is it worth looking at it again, I mean, probably, but to Mr. Scraby Tennis's point, like, we're never gonna get it, we're never gonna know totally.
But I think
We're just gonna have to get it to a place that we're comfortable, yeah.
We're not gonna know.
We're never gonna know, but we can get it to a point where we're comfortable that somebody that's taking over our reign can see, at least see our vision.
Right, but I think what we, I think what Mr. Khan kind of hit the nail on the head before, I think many of us kind of view it as R2 may not be the best use, so that's kind of what we're facing with right now, if it doesn't change.
Right, yeah, so you don't want to wait too long.
Right. And I guess the comment, you know, in terms of the 20%, is, is buildable property area legal, legal, is that enough of a defined legal standard, is that still too vague? You know, open space lots should cover no less than 20% of the buildable property area, or is that just still like subject to like manipulation by, or we could build something over the, you know, over the wetland, but it's not
Well, there's a, yeah, there's a pretty good definition of parkland, and it, yeah, buildable gets to it, although I don't think we have buildable defined in our code, but usable, open space, um, I think, is, if, is defined in the resolutions where the town board has set forth our responsibilities for reviewing parkland, we could certainly, that has been sort of vetted by the review process, over time, we could look at that language.
Is there any other, I, is there any other way to widen our search, I know we've kind of looked sort of in the capital district, but to widen our search various places across the country for the vision that I think we've we all sort of have in our head of what this may be, and kind of figure out what that zoning is, and then just kind of use it to compare against what we have here?
Yeah. Yes.
And
I mean, those are cost propositions, though, if we're gonna widen the search, right, I mean, I mean, we can explore it at some point, but it's a master planning exercise, it's a 40-acre site. I mean, the, I mean, we have to really explore a little bit to really properly evaluate this, and I do think it's gonna end up some version of a TDE, really a town designated architect to plan this out. I, I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get to a satisfactory outcome where we're gonna delegate this to a college student. It, we're only gonna get so far, it's a lot of work, it's a, it's a big site.
Yeah, I mean, for me, in that tweaking exercise of talking about, the priorities would be, again, you know, pedestrian safety, traffic, traffic impact, right? And ensuring that the percentages of commercial, residential, and open space are what we want to be, and somehow have it either be captured in the text of the, of the zoning, and/or, you know, be clearly, you know, part of the, the rubric that the, any planning board is gonna be able to apply in a legal way.
I, I'd also like to throw out there, if, very interested in exploring a commercial use, right, we have a surplus in the capital district, in the region, of a lot of credit tenant commercial uses, we have big box retails, which is unlikely we're gonna survive the test of time, we're looking at a wholesale transformation of a commercial market, right? To have smaller intimate-scale commercial use, which will allow independent retailers to go there, like a Stuyvesant Plaza, would be how do we, how do we create an environment where we'll have, you know, it's gonna be a lower price point for someone, it's gonna be something smaller scale, it's something less costly, because we're gonna want smaller retails in there that I think are more durable. So, I don't know how we capture that, but that's certainly something worth exploring, because another set of large credit tenant retailers, you know, like big bars and restaurants, they're volatile, they don't last, and they're, they're not great uses, and they, I don't think they contribute, they have limited contributions when we really would like to see something more intimate and walkable. So, I don't know how we get there.
I agree, I mean, something along the lines of small-scale, small-scale, you know, the gentleman before, bookstores, coffee shops, but definitely small-scale, that's also gonna promote the community, you know, promoting people walkability, you know, you're not hanging out at Lowe's or the big box stores.
Yeah.
I think it's a good goal, I think it's harder to achieve, I mean, it's certainly harder to achieve, but I think it's not a lower price, price point, I think it's a higher price point, because I think it's, I think it's a harder investment for someone to invest in that than, than something, you know, kind of at a more of a chain
Yeah, and, and, and I think in all honesty, I think the only way you can really regulate any of that relative to the code is, again, just percentages. Right, it's, it's square footages and percentages, right, that's what you could
And maximums, I mean, you could do a maximum individual commercial size. Where you set that point becomes, but you could try.
But then there's a balance too, because then you also want, want to do something that, where people are gonna, where you're actually gonna have people come in with a project.
Right, exactly.
We, you know, we could do that, and then no one comes, and then what, what, you know, what do we achieve, so it's, you know, that, that, that's sort of the dilemma, it's, it's a very important exercise to have, it's almost a comprehensive planning-type exercise, but it is important.
Laura, would you be able to, um, discuss with the state and organize a site visit by the planning boards, we'd get a feel for the whole footprint, just because it's so large?
And only then do you realize just how institutional most of And only then do you realize just how institutional most of those buildings really are. Because I know there was one suggestion that it could just be redeveloped as maybe senior housing or something. I cannot picture that happening. I've been on site several times, not recently, but it's very institutional feel. And I think you're looking at very high demolition costs and other costs because not only are there 12 separate buildings, but there are, I believe, underground tunnels connecting them.
Yeah, there are.
And that's a whole other issue for site redevelopment. And that's another reason why I'm concerned that our issue's not viable. Because the cost of making that site suitable for redevelopment is going to be very high.
Punnels are great for walkability though.
And Fairbanks.
If you don't believe me, come talk to me in one. On a serious note, Laura, I think procedurally, look, we wanna, I think we want to bring this disclosure in some reasonable amount of time.
Yes.
And so maybe from all the feedback we're getting, we're saying we take another pass at a fine tuning that may involve changing the, the code. So we have to go through that procedure again. But I think, you know, if you make a commitment to sign up, at least trying to do it with these things about the safety traffic, all of that stuff like that.
But that's TV as you're actually planning.
Yes.
Because we don't have an application.
Right. Yeah. I mean, we're still, we're still on the right side of this, right?
Yeah, we are.
Right side of the timeline and we can take, take some of those things into greater consideration. Give, at the end of the day, give the board more ability to act on behalf of, you know, both the public and the developers when something comes in. But I think, but I think that R2 or R1 is not gonna be the right usage of this area. Right? We need to do something and just structure it better.
Yeah. But if we're looking at, I think I already said this to Kevin, I would suggest that we take the gasoline service stations out. I mean, that seems contradictory to walkability and.
Hotels, unless we really limit the size of them.
Yeah.
Have you been approached for it? Has anybody come?
For.
Any development?
No. I'm just following up on things that we've talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, this is great. I mean, again, being proactive. How is your budget? Is there, do you have any budget for anything like this?
Depends on how much it costs. I do have a little bit.
I mean, I wouldn't expect them to do like a full blown design, but just look at the percentages and you know, kind of lay it out just to see where the holes are that we would miss to say, hey, this wouldn't work. What you say here, you know, doesn't make sense.
You could do a couple of site plan versions that could be.
Yeah, just to sit with the code, just sit with the code and be like, what would you create, maximizing your profit?
And then we could get that feedback and then along with the comments that we heard tonight about walkability and you know, the gas stations, possible removal, you know, the problem with the maximum sized lot, the frontage not being clear, then we would, you know, that would be identified when they go to lay it out or we would, you know, back that all up and fill in the voids and see where we got then at least, you know. Think, I think we're all in agreement. We don't like the R2, this board. That's, that's what I've heard tonight.
It's not that I don't like it. I don't think it's viable. That's a big distinction.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, for a variety of reasons, right? Yeah.
One of the reasons I suggested maybe having a team of consultants was I'd like to see somebody interpret the way they think we want it and somebody who and maybe other plans that would see how they could skew it and meet the letter of the law, as it were, but still fall short of our vision. And that would help us know what to improve.
We can make a contest. Whoever comes up with the best idea now.
I think, I think we need to find out if you have a project.
Somebody paid architect.
Yeah, paid architect.
And maybe a project for some students.
Yeah. It sounds like we're in agreement there that we need, need some work on it. Need to make sure that it would work. Has been around a while, but again, you don't want to have to work through the issues during the site plan process. We'd like to at least get it best we can. And we do have time, as far as we know, we have time, right? There's always a guest there, but.
And for that, it's worth, Laura, maybe, you know, maybe this time let's just keep it on our agenda and let it not go away, right? So we just make, we're going to move through the next several meetings and get it to.
Yeah. What year was it, Laura? It was 2016?
15 or 16.
We looked at it before.
Yeah. It was November 26.
Oh, when we did the last.
Oh, actually 2017. Yeah.
Yeah, that was actually just the last round of zoning code amendments. But we did that sort of anticipation of moving it forward in that OD hack area.
Yeah.
You know, Leslie made an interesting point before that economics of this site will be probably driven by the cost of demolition. That will drive big box retail and very dense housing more than any other factor. Be curious to know whether or not the state intends just to be, is it just a as is quick claim deed they're gonna transfer or are they planning on? Are they gonna remediate the site? Are they gonna do the environmental remediation? I mean, I think, is it as is?
Well, the state hasn't put anything out for sale. So, I mean, they wouldn't even say that yet, I don't think.
Oh, they, I mean, I know ESDC has been on the site, has walked it.
Oh, okay.
They've, they've toured the site.
Who's that?
Empire State Development Corporation. I, I know they've been.
Well, I know, but well, the reason that it went into the comprehensive plan is at some point in 2013 area timeframe, there was rumblings that the state was gonna sell it because it's not fully occupied. I mean, it's definitely out there, but they haven't actually said, we're evaluating it. We're gonna put it out there for sale. Haven't said that.
It'll be a lot to demo the site. I mean, that'll, that'll, that'll drive the, that'll drive the site plan more than any other factor, more than any zoning plan we can prescribe. Is the cost of demolition will be the first $3 million into the deal, right? We'll have a lot of, we'll have KFC sitting in the middle of that project as, you know, just as soon as you start the development. I just, just got to pay attention to that. I think that'd be something to negotiate is this. I think it's gonna have a lot of environmental issues. It's gonna be, it's got a lot of complexity. It's a complex site.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it sure is.
Okay. So it sounds like we'll leave it on the agenda, maybe not next meeting, but do some work to take a look at the budget and come up with some thoughts about how we could at least get some concepts. Jeff, anything we can do there or any help we can get from anybody? If there's somebody out there that could help us out. And we'll see how the, the vision works and what's lacking so that when we get to the point where we're ready to move it on to town board, we make sure the, the product is good. I guess that's where we're at, right? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. Anything else on that, Laura?
I'm just looking at my notes.
I've got quite a few. I can always jot them down for you too and.
No, I just wanted to, to clarify that we, we have been looking at some zoning code changes. We occasionally bring those to you. Airbnb, a couple of other things clarifying. I, I think we've talked about chickens before, but at no time have we been talking about a wholesale rezone of the town in Niskuna. So that has not been on our agenda for the record.
Okay. All right. I guess we'll move on then. Laura, do you have anything for reports tonight?
No, I did. I did attend the training along with a whole bunch of you guys at Saratoga and it was very useful. I did want to let you guys know that if we are looking at zoning code changes again, there's, you know, there's, there was a zany zone, zany zoning code training that I took that explained like how towns, when they were reactionary zoning things, you know, created these minimum lot sizes and minimum street frontage requirements that don't meet what the neighborhood actually looks like. And the sort of end result of that is if, you know, you know, fires come or something happens and a couple houses are brought up and then brought down, that the development that goes in after is contrary to the neighborhoods, neighborhoods that you have there and it has been problematic. And I was telling this, James, because he met me on the outside of class. I mean, it's almost exactly what we've done in Old Niskuna. So there may be something that we want to look. There may be some other things that we want to look at if we're gonna open up our code. I mean, we could just focus on OD hack or we could, you know, try and fix the world.
Yeah, I guess we're best taking off.
A little chunk at a time.
Because it's a lot of work, as you know, and 40 acres at a clip. You got it. I do have a couple of questions for you. One is the batteries and bulbs. The question we left off was whether or not they could do work in the parking lot. Have they come in for a permit?
They haven't come in for a permit yet. We're still researching that. It's, I mean, it's not like clearly defined in the code, so.
Okay. They haven't come in. And what else I have? Yeah, I think that was it.
Was there anything, I, I heard comments tonight about the proposal for Knott Street. Was there anything new that that's, that's come up?
Not really. They have to meet with New York State DOT about what is going to be sort of required by the state for that intersection. So they need, they're right now scheduling a time to meet with the state on the state requirements. And then they want to have another, reach out to the businesses after they meet with the state. Because they're still trying to incorporate all the needs of the businesses. And then they would have public meetings and that kind of stuff. I mean, the town's still collecting comments from people, coordinating them, gonna send them all over to the county, still paying attention. They've been told that, I've been told that if the county has another meeting, that we'll be invited and I'll try and attend all of those. If I can't make it, I'll make sure that Jeff goes so that there'll always be at least a member, a planning member at any of those meetings. And then I think usually the town board, at least one or two town board people also go to those meetings. Pay attention. I mean, it's right in the town, it's right in our town center. So. But right now, another meeting has not been scheduled. So I'm just listening, paying attention, making sure I touch base with them whenever I can and coordinating comments for them.
Okay. So, so I, I want to keep the protocol of the meeting, but there is a question that I wanted to ask. When folks came and said they supported the plan, were you talking about a specific plan? Because the only plan is the county's plan.
I think that's the plan they were talking about.
Okay.
With pedestrian amenities.
Plan that'll most likely end up being the one.
Yeah.
Did the county work out all three options they were supposed to have or?
No, not yet. They're still, they're still working on their three options.
So, so the public doesn't necessarily know what all the plans are. They just know like one of them that's.
Well, there's a plan that was used to secure the grant, which shows the parking barrier and the angled parking. You know, that's the one that was actually used to secure the grant is, is an alternative that they would move forward. That's, you know, then there's, they usually have a do nothing alternative. And I think they were still searching. I mean, the one that was used to secure the grant is probably already changed because they were coordinating with the businesses and they had to do some deliveries on the side of the building that they didn't know about. So you can't put like a curb there. So, I mean, those, a lot of those elements are already changing based on the actual like boots on the ground. What gets delivered where? Where are the stormwater catch basins? Where are the sewer lines? How deep are they? Like all of that stuff is now like rolling into the actual engineering plans. So, but no, they don't have three alternatives yet. They will develop those and then reach out to the public.
How about the comments from the webpage from the, the call for comments? Have we received any more? Is that slowed down?
Yeah, we really did not receive that many, but still happy to receive them and coordinate them and make sure that the county hears what people.
Have you summarized those, put, put together what we've heard so far?
I have. Yeah. I mean, I mean, I have them. I can certainly.
Yes, sooner or later, something we should take a look at too, if you don't mind. Any themes at all?
Um, I mean, there's a very strong theme of walkability. I mean, I know that it may scare the businesses to be losing a parking space or two out there, but if you make that safe to walk, I think for every parking space you lose, you gain like 10 walkers. There's really, really a lot of interest from people to make that a safe place to walk.
I do remember one question I had, maybe this is for Mr. Hess, but if the state, say in a month or so from now said, hey, we're, you know, we're really thinking about doing something with OD hack and just kind of the word gets out there. I mean, no action, but you just, something's gonna happen. It's inevitable. But a moratorium process, that'd be something that town board could use to, to put a hold on that 43 acres until was rezoned or a decision was made on zoning?
So we can do a moratorium. We haven't done one since I've been town attorney. The benefit of it, it gives you time to do the type of thing that we're doing now, which is make sure that we have a good plan in place. Timing's always an issue. You know, you want to make sure that the then owner doesn't think that they're being somehow prejudiced by the fact that you're putting a moratorium in place to make sure they can't do what they want to do. Which is why when the residents spoke about why we're taking action now, my position has always been we've got more options now. It's more defensible to change the zone here before there's any plan in place. But the moratorium would be one of our options.
Okay. So another good reason why to keep moving forward. Because if it were to come to that, at least you could justify it, saying, hey, we're, we're already working on it. We're not there yet. So the moratorium could at least buy some more time. You know?
Yeah, I think that's sound reasoning.
All right. That's all. I had any other questions for Laura? No? All right. How about commission business? Mr. Roster?
Nothing.
Mr. Diopino?
Nothing.
You're gone?
I actually have a couple because Laura reminded me. It's, it's about the planning and zoning conference in Saratoga. So I think there was two of them that I had gone to where most of the other folks from here weren't there. But if you were there, I think they seem like you could speak up too. So one that's really quick is the one on climate change and green infrastructure. And I just found that very informative about, you know, just the, you know, change in rainfall limits, et cetera. One of the big takeaways was when people plan for, you know, 100 year, you know, water events, they're now at a 70 year frequency. And I guess the MS4, you know, calculations have all been updated to, to account for now, not just an area, but actually local latitude and longitude based water report. So I provided, you know, they, they had the, the disc with all their presentation information and a reference to, you know, green infrastructure buildings. I thought that was good. So I think it's probably worthwhile. You could probably get more copies of that, I think, Laura, I think.
Yeah, we could probably even put them in a drop box.
Yeah. I mean, I, I thought about it. Yeah, maybe that's, or you could just column and ask them. I was gonna just grab a whole stack for the planning board, but I just, I felt like one of those guys.
Share this information.
I decided to take the brownies and said, no, I didn't take, I didn't take any brownies. Discs or brownies. Right? Yeah. Anyway, didn't take the brownies. There were no brownies. The more important one, and this is one I'd like us to have a follow up on. So I was gonna send you an email, but maybe this makes it official. So the town of Half Moon gave a presentation called Traffic Improvement Agreements. Right? The Public Private Path Traffic Relief. So I'm not gonna belabor it. Were you in that one, Daisy? Good. So you can back me up if I get something wrong. The big takeaway. And I'll tell you what I took away from it. So they had a tremendous amount of closed door meetings, very tough, very difficult with developers, lawyers and planning board people and other vehicle traffic people that they brought in. And I'm highlighting that part because that's not the part you see on the nice package wrapped with the bow. So there was a lot of arm wrestling. There was a lot of argument. There was a lot of, you know, it remained congenial at the end of the day, but you can tell that they slugged it out. Effectively, they, without ever saying the word, that planning board and town board behave like they had a moratorium on any development. Unless developers would all contribute pretty significant sums of money to traffic improvements. So the sum total of the traffic improvements was like 2 million. Oddly enough, I think they only actually physically raised like a quarter million.
Yeah, I think different phases.
Yeah.
They were doing it.
Right. So their full phase ones that they identified, and these are things like traffic lights and, and roadway improvements that are. I think we need to, ironically, they're plagued by 146 too. Right? Because 146 turns and heads up, you know, east out to, to Half Moon. I think it's something we need to consider primarily again for Balltown Road. Four sidewalks, right? And all the other things that we learned about traffic control and the concerns about people spilling into town in Niskuna. The, the place where this all started was, you know, they got the developers to agree to pay for lawyers and to pay for vehicle engineers, vehicle traffic study engineers. Right? And however that happened, that happened, but they did. And that's how the process started. And it was like a 10 year.
It's like, yeah, 10 year and then I think three years in the hard and fast negotiations that were going back and forth. Then, because they did have the, they were looking ahead, thinking that, you know, one developer's project isn't going to have a significant impact to this already busy intersection. The second developer will start to show something by the third development, this is really gonna have an impact. That's how we, when we think of Balltown Road and we think that we already have a, you know, congested area and we're, you know, looking at things all the time. And so then they got all the developers on board to look at that big picture. And then, you know, as Mr. Khan said, through a lot of discussions, closed door meetings, they came up with a formula. In their case, was it $2,000 per unit?
Yeah, it was different for different kinds of developments, but it was a few to several thousand dollars per unit in any development that would strictly go towards escrow for traffic improvement.
Right. But i- in where? Like, I mean, within their area or outside of?
Within.
Within their area.
Within their area.
No, no, but within the area that they're developing or the entire town?
The whole, the whole town.
Right. Not the whole town, but within a certain area that's gonna affect.
Quarter, within the 146th quarter.
Yeah, that 146, 236 corridor.
And it is. And, and it is written in that any, I think there's one or two large land masses that will be available for, you know, construction development in the future. It's written in that any developer who is coming into those will be buying into this agreement. They don't have an option.
But I guess just to kind of take it out the plate of what would Niskuna, so, I mean, that theoretically mean like, say, the Amador development, just going back in time. That, that developer there could then pay to look at the, like, sidewalk development along other portions of like
Balltown.
Balltown Road?
Yeah. If it was, if it were something like Balltown, the answer would be yes.
Right, because if, if, yeah, it would be.
If it's, if it's Route seven, probably no. But if it's Balltown, the answer would be yes. So like, if you're touching, if you are putting people out onto a, and, and, and so one of the key things, so to finish that off, you're putting people out onto a route, then anywhere along that route becomes fair game for where you're.
Even, even if it's like a mile away.
Right, yeah.
Something like that, okay.
Yeah.
The key thing is that, um, they just, all they needed from the state was just approval on specific plans. And they took it on themselves through this methodology to raise the funds to do this. So they never asked the state for money. Which we've always kind of been, I know, always, you know, being uncertain and vague about with relative to what the state is going to do, right? We, I think we got, we were fortunate with the bridge. But look, at the end of the day, we know that that corridor from River, from Providence River Road to all the way out, I would say to Mansion Square and Moha Commons, where both sidewalks, traffic speed, all those things, right? We, we know that those are issues that need to get resolved. The distance between Route seven and Union Street, it, I, I mean, it, it's horrible just because the distance is so short. Right? That's one, that's a major factor in here. So from the stuff we learned in traffic, right? What are all the things that can be done? So I think the first place to start might be somehow absorbing or distributing the cost of a traffic, of a real serious traffic study, or maybe getting a grant like you had said, right?
A linkage study, yeah.
Yeah. And just the last part on the whole thing that, you know, Chris and I were talking about is that for the area that the public's been mentioning here tonight, from console to, to Mansion Square and to, um, Moha Commons, it'd be great if you could actually retroactively go back to those developers and say, guys, look, we need to actually put sidewalks here on both sides of the street, or at least on one side.
Yeah.
Right? You would think we could at least start that discussion and just see where it goes.
Well, I mean, it's very difficult to apply anything retroactively.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Because some of us fought really hard to try and get sidewalks there in the first place, and it didn't work?
So, I mean, I'm just saying that we need to maybe think in a novel manner relative to some of these things, but there, there are these various pinch points, and I know fully well that that is a pinch point, right? And you got to think, I mean, walkability into Moha Commons and Mansion Square is a
Yeah, we did talk about that.
Yeah, would be a big deal, right? So anyway, that was it. And just the last part, and this is for you, Bob. Someone asked a question, wasn't me. Um, you know, what happens if a developer now is going to sue you because they don't like what this is? And you know what the answer was? Well, the statute of limitations period has passed, and so they don't have the ability to sue anyone.
Half Moon was at the town themselves?
So the town supervisor was there and also the gentleman, I forgot his name, who I guess he was in Niskuna at some point.
Oh, Richard Harris, yeah.
He was there.
He's a town planner.
Um, V B H for vehicle, um, traffic study and, um, Hannah Osterman Legal. Um, that was a very good presentation. That's a memorable one for me. I mean, I, I took good notes, but everything I was saying here is without looking at the notes, and I think it's, you know, I, I, it'd be great if we could, could have or can do something like that, given that there's not a lot more development opportunities, but.
Yeah. P S, training for planning board members is awesome. Save the date for May twenty ninth.
No, thanks, Mr. Khan.
One other small takeaway that Daisy and I, we went to a seminar and they thought we should, uh, the planning board should contemplate the growth expansion of pharmaceutical and recreational pot stores. That's going to be something you adapt our codes.
Right, and how it fits in retail in the town code. Or how it doesn't fit, I mean, however you look at it.
Yeah, Half Moon just had, there's open also right there. And Half Moon just opened one, the, uh.
They did?
Yeah.
I mean, we can only open medicinal.
Right, at this current moment in time, but assuming, uh, legislation passes for.
Assuming. Not a slam dunk, guaranteed. Those tax revenue gap.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Scrappy Tennis?
I'm done.
I'm all set.
Okay, and I have, I have nothing further. All right, a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Khan? Second, I, Mr. Osser. Okay, I guess it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Yeah, that was a great.